Good evening. My name is Arts Brew. I'm Chair of the Planning Board. This is the Town of Chatham Planning Board Hybrid Meeting, July 14th, 2025. It's 5:00 PM. Please note this meeting is being recorded and will be available shortly thereafter for scheduled and on-demand viewing on any smartphone or tablet device. If anyone is recording the meeting, please notify the Chair. Pursuant to Governor Healey's March 28, 2025 signing of Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2025, extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting laws, general law, Chapter 38, Section 20, until June 30, 2027. This meeting of the Chatham Planning Board is being conducted in person and via remote participation. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access proceedings as provided for in the order. A reminder that persons who would like to listen to this meeting while in progress may do so by calling the phone number 508-945-4410, conference ID 135955713, or join the meeting online via Microsoft Teams through the link in the posted agenda. While this is a live broadcast and simulcast on Chatham TV, Xfinity Channel 1072, despite our best efforts, we may not be able to provide real-time access. We will post a record of this meeting on the town's website as soon as possible. And I fail to say, if anyone else is recording the meeting, please notify the Chair. And I don't see anybody. So I'd like to begin with a roll call vote. Catherine Hopper.
Present.
Warren Chang.
Present.
Bob Werschafter.
Present.
Charlene Greenhall.
Present.
Frank Shear.
Present.
Bob Dubus.
Bob Dubus, present.
And Arts Brew, I'm present. Let's begin with approval of minutes of June 23rd, 2025. Any comments?
I have to excuse myself for sequonset.
Okay, thank you. And with the minutes, we go with that one. And any comments?
I had one thing.
Sure.
Just at the very end, the motion to adjourn, I was not there.
Oh, good one.
Good old cut and paste. I love it.
Good one.
That's all I found.
I have a comment.
Any others?
Yes.
I have a comment, but I will accept your opinions. Under the public hearings for 79 Forest Beach Road, a motion was made to accept the withdrawal of the modified subdivision plan without prejudice. Now, was this the one that wasn't filed and so we couldn't?
No.
This is not, this was recorded?
This was a modification that was submitted subsequent to that, and that was the one that was being.
So this one was recorded and it is bona fide, modified?
This wasn't recorded, it was just filed.
The application was for a modification.
Right, that's all.
So this is a correct, I just want to make sure this is a correct.
I believe it is.
wording. Okay.
All right, so do I hear a motion, approval of the minutes as corrected?
I don't see the correction, to be honest.
We decided not to correct it.
No, no, I don't see your name on it. There were six people voted and I don't think there is a.
It's on the very last page.
It's on the very last page.
Way on top.
Greenholt, there it is. Motion was made.
No, I'm looking at the one online and it isn't, so.
Well, I'm looking at the one in my packet. So either way, it needs to be.
Oh, I see.
Yep.
Okay. Sorry, my bad.
I move to accept the minutes as modified.
Okay. Do I have a second?
I second.
Okay, I'll do a roll call vote. Catherine Hopper.
I approve.
Warren Chang.
I approve.
Bob Werschafter.
I approve.
Charlene Greenhall.
Abstain.
Abstain. Frank Shear.
I approve.
Bob Dubus.
I approve.
And Arts Brew, I approve. All right, next item on the agenda is a release of statement of conditions, 16 Sequonset Road, and appearing, Bobby, you're stepping down. And David, are you going to speak on behalf of the applicant?
No.
Christine had told the applicant that she did not need to be present for this item.
Okay, fine. So we will just deal with this ourselves. I did review Christine's comments. I did go out and see the site. She did also. We both concur that the conditions have been satisfied. So if there is no comments or questions by any of the board members, we can actually move to proceed with approval of this and release.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we release the statement of conditions for 16 Sequonset Road.
I second.
Okay, do a roll call vote. Catherine Hopper.
I approve.
Warren Chang.
Yeah, I abstain. I was not able to get to the site visit.
Okay.
It's still bothering me if you didn't.
I could, but I don't need it, so.
Okay. Bob Werschafter.
I approve.
Charlene Greenhall.
Approve.
Frank Shear.
Approve.
And Arts Brew, I approve. Okay, next is approval not required for 41 Perch Road, Pond Road. Thad, you are appearing on behalf of the applicant. And if you could get a summary of your application.
Good afternoon. For the record, Thad Aldridge, East Southeast, here representing the Mannixes. A number of years ago, my father combined three lots together to form the current property, and now we're dividing it into two. Both have 20,000 square feet of buildable upland, over 100 feet of frontage. They're on a road that dates back to before the subdivision control law in town. And that's about it. It's been to the land court. They've been happy with it, so.
Any comments or questions of the board members of the applicant? No. I had no comments myself.
Looks pretty straightforward.
Then could I hear a motion of endorsing the A&R Plan?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we endorse the A&R Plan entitled Division Plan, being a re-division of Land Court Plant 11697-G, Lot 42, for 41 Perch Pond Road, West Chatham, Mass., dated April 5, 2025, and revised through June 18, 2025, prepared for Thomas and Joanne Mannix, and prepared by South Southeast LLC, in that it meets all the necessary requirements for the endorsement of an A&R Plan.
And a second?
I second.
Okay, we'll do a roll call vote. Catherine Hopper.
I approve.
Warren Chang.
I approve.
Bob Werschafter.
I approve.
Charlene Greenhall.
Approve.
Frank Shear.
I approve.
Bob Dubus.
I approve.
And Arts Brew, I approve. Thank you very much. Okay, that leaves us with continuing a public hearing for Zero Evergreen Lane. Now, David, you can join us. This is a modification for a defender of subdivision. I believe you've received, I hope you've received the documents that we have in our packet here for the covenant, statement of conditions, form.
Yes. So, for the record, David Clark, Clark Engineering. We looked at the covenant and the statement conditions, and I think everything is satisfactory at this point.
I think the only thing that Christine wanted to add was on the modification plan referred to throughout the document shall have a note added referring to the easement on Lot 1A to Lot 1B and the appropriate signature block for recording. You should just add that to the drawing so that we can sign off the approval on that plan.
I don't understand. We're not changing anything, any of the prior approvals of the lot.
Well, this is not for the lot. This is actually for the subdivision of the road. We're also approving changes and revisions to the subdivision construction of the road.
But if I might, that's on the plan and profile, and that doesn't get recorded at the register.
Not the plan and profile, but the plan. We often endorse the plan itself, though.
There is no plan to be endorsed.
Mm-mm. He's correct in that.
My understanding on 81W is a plan needs to accompany any document so that there's a reference to it. We can certainly, as I said last time, attach reduced copies of the construction drawings to the covenant. So, because, you know, this, to prepare a plan for endorsement means the property needs to be surveyed again. And that hasn't been done. So this would set the applicant back three or four months to have a plan that can be endorsed that shows no changes to the property.
Okay. And then, did you clarify the issue between the two different plans with the two different square footages for Lot 1A and 1B?
I wasn't.
There is a plan that has lot, I think Christine put it in her notes. Yeah, the 2004 Plan, Lot 1A, is 28,115, and Lot 1B is 40,428. And then the 2025, 2005 Plan, Lot 1A is 32,130 square feet, and Lot 1B is 36,410 square feet. I believe the 2005 Plan is the one that has always been cited, associated with this, because it has a different configuration for Lot 1B. So Christine has noted the 2005 Plan, which I believe is the correct square footage is.
I don't seem to have a copy of the 2000 Plan, 2005 Plan handy.
Well, both of those were recorded, but one was a year after the other. So I'm assuming the 2005 Plan is the one that applies.
It only applies as if that, if it was the plan that was used to convey the lot. If the 2004 Plan was used to convey the lot, that one prevails. Because that's how it was.
Well, the reference that we have in the covenant and in the statement of conditions all relate to the 2005 Plan.
And what's the plan book and does it?
Well, all I was saying is, is both of those were recorded, the 2004 Plan and the 2005 Plan.
Yeah, I'm just seeing which, trying to find which is which. Because the deed references the plan book 606.
David's right. Which of the plans was used to convey the lot, the covenant prevails.
Yeah.
We need to, so we need to know that.
Of course, now I can't find the latest version of the covenant. That's, yes, it's correct. The new covenant references the correct plan, the 2005 Plan.
Okay, good.
So that's, that's what the deed calls out, is what was conveyed.
All right. So I would just want to go through and see if the board members have any comments or questions for you, David, on this. Catherine?
Surprisingly, I actually don't. When I first took a look at this, I thought this is still rather complicated. But I do feel that the points in the statement of conditions in the covenant that I'm sure you and Christine worked through are adequate to.
Yes.
Meet the needs of what's required here, so.
Warren?
I endorse that. I really, as I understand it, as long as staff is comfortable that this achieves the ultimate objectives and solves the problems we've identified along the way, I'm okay with everything that you.
I believe they have, yes. Bob Werschafter.
Same here.
Charlene?
As long as, as David pointed out, that the modification plan and construction plan are included.
According to.
As an addendum to the necessary document, I'm fine.
Okay, right.
I can vote on this because I missed the last meeting.
Oh, that's right, yeah.
I agree with the comments that have been made.
And Bob Dubus?
I'm all set, thank you.
And I'm set also. So I think we can close the public hearing. That would be the first element to do, so.
I can do that. I move that we close the public hearing.
Second.
All right, now do a roll call vote. Catherine?
I approve.
Warren?
I approve.
Bob Werschafter.
I approve.
Charlene Greenhall.
Approve.
Frank Shear.
Approve.
Bob Dubus.
I approve.
And Arts Brew, I approve. All right, so we have a covenant. We have a statement of conditions. We got a Form E1. I think we're all set for a motion to approve the modification to the Evergreen Lane subdivision.
One quick question.
Sure.
Which document should this be attached to? I'm having a little bit of a brain. I would think the covenant?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. I agree.
I'm happy to make the motion.
Sure.
I can't vote on it, but I can make the motion.
I would appreciate that.
I move that we approve the covenant, along with the attachments as discussed, the amended or modified, modification of the definitive subdivision plan statement of conditions in the Form E1 for the modification plan, most recently dated May 7, 2025.
And do I have a second?
I second.
Okay, we'll do a roll call vote. Catherine Hopper.
I approve.
Warren Chang.
I approve.
Bob Werschafter.
I approve.
And Charlene, you're going to abstain.
I'm abstaining.
Frank Shear.
I approve.
Bob Dubus.
I approve.
And Arts Brew, I approve.
Thank you.
Thank you, David.
So we expect to get the final version of the covenant, because it still says draft on it, I believe, at least the version I got. So I can get that recorded along with the other documents. Before we record that.
I think, I think there needs to be a 21-day appeal period that we have to wait for, and then, then we can, you know, go through with these.
So in the meantime, I can come back and get that lot released from the first covenant. Or would it be, actually, this is the third covenant, so it would be the second covenant.
I would believe so, yes.
In the meantime? Okay, okay.
Yep. So I can send in a new letter since I think we've gone past the extension that was granted. But I look back at the subdivision control law, and it, there's not a lot of language about modification and timelines, but.
It's the same as a definitive.
Is it? Okay.
So I will send a new letter just to be safe.
Thank you. I would appreciate that.
Thank you.
All right. Next item on the agenda, we have a full board here. So it's the beginning of the fiscal year with a full board. We'll look at a board reorganization. Leave it open to the board members to make any comments or nominations of who they would like to have in the leadership positions.
I strongly recommend that we keep it the way it is.
I would vote Charlene, though, to be vice president.
Vice president, yes.
Vice president, all right.
Whatever, vice, whatever it is.
Really elevate.
Second chairman or whatever. What do you want me to call her?
Vice chair.
Vice chair, all right.
And I'd like to throw in my two cents worth. I appreciate all of you, how to say, giving your confidence for me to continue as vice chair with Art as the chair. But I would want to warmly welcome Charlene into that role, and I would really support her to take on the vice chair. I'm happy to step back. Been doing this for a long time. I think Art's been doing a fabulous job, and I think Art and Charlene would be a great combination.
I'm, I'm in support of Charlene being vice chair. I think, I think Catherine deserves a break from any kind of a leadership role. She's been doing it for probably eight years.
I think it's more like 10.
10, okay. I didn't want to shortchange you.
Aw, shucks.
Yeah.
Actually, I would nominate, as, as the current clerk, I would nominate Frank as the newest member of the board as the clerk.
Yep. Is that something that you're willing to step up to?
I second that one.
I'll need help.
Not a problem.
Yeah. It's, it's not a major role. You do, you do some reading. Well.
Were you a lawyer? Are I, you a lawyer? You should have plenty of.
A lot of experience.
Experienced and distinguished lawyer, yes.
All I did was read stuff. That's all you got to do. Yeah.
All right. So we have a nomination then for, for me to be Chair again?
I would be happy to make that nomination.
And should we do this as separate votes or all together?
You can do it all.
All together. So, so we are talking about nomination for Arts Brew as, as Chair, Charlene as vice chair, and Frank for clerk. Do I have a motion for that?
Yep. So moved. Second.
All right, we'll do a roll call vote. Catherine Hopper.
I approve.
Warren Chang.
I approve.
Bob Werschafter.
I approve.
Charlene Greenhall.
If I have to, I approve.
Frank Shear.
I guess I approve.
And Bob Dubus.
Well, I don't know. Everybody's kind of hesitating. Oh, I approve.
Arts Brew, I approve. It's, I appreciate the support of the board members. I wasn't quite sure how this whole role was going to be. It does take up a little bit more of my time than I had imagined. I'm willing to step into it for another, another year. I hope we're a little bit more successful than we were last year, but I think we have some legs underneath us with what we've done so far. I suggest that I work with the community development staff in the next meeting or two, list the items that we should be undertaking in the upcoming years, set some priorities for that. I hope the seasonal communities doesn't put too much a curve ball at us, but we'll see what that does. I understand it may not get guidance until the fall. So we may not know for a bit, but then we'll, we'll just have to deal with it and deal with priorities. And but if any of the board members have certain thoughts or that now or in the, in the next reorganization period, that's fine.
The only, the only thought I have is to put together some kind of plan of action for West Chatham.
Yeah. I, I agree with you completely. That's something we didn't have a chance to do too, too much. At least I, I didn't, I was, we went from finalizing the document to going to each of the boards to get their approval on it, and then town meeting, and almost no time to do, do that. So this year, I, I think that that's going to be the most important thing. And I will work with the community development to come up with perhaps some suggested approach. And by all means, the board should chime in. I'd like to do that as soon as we can on that, so that we get our legs underneath us and really get the word out about what we have developed as part of the bylaw. Catherine?
Yeah, I just wanted to support what Frank said and, and say that we have a lot of other things on our to-do list that have been on our to-do list probably for years. And we've put West Chatham in the forefront. And it's just my opinion that I think it deserves, as in terms of long-range planning, probably most, if not all, of our attention to publicize it, to educate the citizens of the Town of Chatham, and to, to get it passed at annual town meeting 2026.
Well, we were 11 votes short, and that wasn't bad for a first time out, so. Yeah. Well, I don't have any other comments. And if there is nothing else, we can have a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adjourn this meeting.
I second it.
All right, then I'll do a roll call vote. Catherine?
I approve.
Warren?
I approve.
Werschafter?
I approve.
I approve.
Charlene?
I approve.
Frank?
I approve.
Bob Dubas?
I approve.
And Art Sproul, I approve. And the time is 5:24, 26, excuse me, 5:26 p.m.